Chock full. So, the call to order, obviously, sorry, 501. Do we have any citizens' comments? Two citizens' comments, okay. I will call on you if you're good with that, but as I do in most of our school committee meetings, I'm going to share with you the two policies that we have relative to citizens' comments. The school committee meeting is a business meeting. So, that's why we don't have interaction with discussions, because we've got to get through a pretty big laundry list generally of issues on the school committee agenda. We've got two policies, KE and BEDH. We've got five minutes appropriated on the agenda. Please keep your comments to three minutes. We want to hear what you have to say, obviously. Your comments should relate to an item on the agenda. Otherwise, there's no discussion from the school committee about it because it wouldn't be on the agenda. Please keep your comments appropriate, respectful. We will absolutely do the same. We definitely want to hear what you have to say. And I'm not going to go into the rest of it because I think some of you have heard it, but for our newest folk here, why don't you tell us your name and your town and then give us an overview?
Sure. My name's Patrick Mahoney, I'm from Bolton.
Mm-hmm.
I wanted to make a public comment related to the item on the agenda. I don't remember which number it was, but it was about creating the agenda for the next meeting. So adding an agenda item for the next meeting, if I could. I can keep it very short.
Okay, well, agenda items are placed there by the school committee, but if you want to give us an overview of what it is you'd like to say, we'll certainly listen.
Yes, I will be quick. So, okay, on the school committee's website, right on the homepage, there are the overarching goals, which were adopted by, I believe, this full committee on September 28th, 2016. On it states, overarching goal five states that first-rate education is our community's most valuable asset. It further continues noting that family input, in terms of protecting that asset, is both valuable and, quote, necessary. We recently just voted unanimously to increase the tuition on the pre-K by between 32 and 35 percent. Did so, for the most part, with no notice to the parents and at a time of the year when the window has substantially closed for other options. So, to put that in perspective, right, for a full-day student, that's $2,200, I think. And for those of us like myself who have two of them, that's $4,400. So, the lack of notice on that puts some, a lot of families in a, paints us into an ugly corner, essentially. So, my, what I was suggesting today is that we afford parents and families that opportunity to provide their input. So, the school committee, some members of the school committee are on record as saying that there was no family input taken into that. And then in the letter to the editor, that letter to the editor that at least was in the Bolton Independent the other day, it talked about hours-long discussion and a passionate debate. It's not clear to me, having reviewed all of the school committee meetings that are available on YouTube, who in those debates represented the families. Yet, you do state that it is a core tenet on overarching goal that family input be engaged in that conversation. So, anyways, just to wrap up real quick then, I would ask that you retroactively, give you an opportunity to retroactively seek input from families. I've spoken to approximately maybe 45 of the families that are impacted, and none of them said they had any opportunity to put in, I mean, they didn't even know it was coming. So clearly, they had no opportunity to give input, but they most certainly would like to. So if you can put that on your meeting agenda for whatever your next meeting is, hopefully before the town meeting, it would be much appreciated. Thank you for the time.
Okay, so, I am going to give you some perspective, a little bit of perspective.
Oh, I don't think I need perspective.
Hours-long discussions did occur. One of the things, one of the things you, that I want the public to understand is that the school committee meetings are when the large group gets together and those are televised. There's an enormous amount of work that's done in the subcommittee meetings that are not televised. You can absolutely see the same, you know, the agendas are always posted and you can see the content there, and you are more than welcome, in fact, we would like to have parents come to that. As far as the timing of the decision, you know, could it have gone out sooner? We voted it on February 27th. The discussions started at the beginning of January. So, I think that making sure that, and it's new, and when you're new to this, you don't really know. I mean, even when you get on the school committee, you're kind of not sure exactly how it works. But those subcommittee meetings is where the heavy lifting comes and then they come up to the school committee. So there were hours-long discussions on it.
Oh, and I don't question the amount of work, sorry.
I think the other thing is, could, I think, I look at things like what could be done differently going forward. And one of the things I think we could do differently is start the discussion earlier. This year, we weren't able to because of the forensic audit, which was a critical component to the budget, wouldn't have been. But certainly, we could start those discussions earlier, which is a goal of the finance subcommittee anyway, and then have those, the decisions made earlier in the year. As far as the goal of the school committee regarding communication, that is an absolute critical statement, and I respect what you said. I, I think, you know, when this, when you're looking at the various priorities and the various topics of interest in the school committee, there are different groups, like, we've got a group of folks who are really concerned about the technology infrastructure and where does that sit. So that's one of the things we're going to be talking about. We've got an enormous amount of people concerned about the high school. What are we going to do with the high school? So, it is incumbent upon folks to look at those agendas and see what those topics are. But I do think that there's constant interaction with the community. And we'll, and we'll look at that and see what more we could do. So I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a comment related from the finance subcommittee. I can just quickly put it out there that we did discuss today as part of our budget calendar, putting together the things like fees. Start that in September. Make those decisions. This year, it wasn't possible, as Lorraine said, just because of the situation we were in. But we definitely will be doing, making that plan. So fees, rentals, all those things that are fee-based, we can do ahead of the budget. And that is really the intention, we're putting together policies to make sure that happens.
Great, thank you. Okay, and we have one more.
Hi, I'm Laura Roberts from Bolton. I just was, I saw on the agenda that the finance subcommittee is going to report out today. So I just wanted to ask if it would be possible, when you report out, to also let us know when your meeting minutes for the last four months will be posted on the website. There's no minutes on the website since November 30th, 2016. So I understand that you've done a lot of work in your subcommittees. And for me, I didn't get to go to them, they're not on TV, and I can't read your minutes.
So, thank you for that, I appreciate that. So, actually, we approved-
February and March 22nd today. We're moving forward on this, it's just the budget got so out of control for us.
So, yeah, that's for us. So where's, so, you know, we'll save this for the subcommittee report, but all those meeting minutes should be up. I think I even provided direction that those meetings should be up by the next meeting. We, especially during budget season, each finance subcommittee or policy or personnel, each meeting minute, each set of minutes from the previous meeting should be reviewed and voted then, especially during finance. Kind of no excuse. Okay, thank you.
Could I just tack on, the meeting materials are also never posted for the finance subcommittee?
Well, I don't know if there are any, but if there are, they will absolutely find their way into that packet. All right, thanks for that, I appreciate it. Okay, so thank you very much. We're going to move now into new business with the robotics overnight travel approval, and I'm going to turn it over to you, Superintendent Clenching.
Yeah, I think it's pretty straightforward. We're thrilled, I watched the robotics team last night as they were continuing to tweak their robot so that it could hit the basket just right with a variety of balls and that. It was amazing to watch. So they are all set. There are 24 students heading off to the main New Hampshire area, there are four chaperones, and this is pretty much the standard for what's happened every year. So this is nothing new, to be honest with you.
Okay, so you need-
I will move that we accept the robotics overnight field trip travel on-
We've got two of them, Jennifer.
March 30th to April 1st and-
Mark?
April 5th.
April 5th to April 8th.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you so much. Okay, old business. Cole, Susan's not here, are you going to take this one?
Um, yeah.
Actually, Anne-Marie, I think, is happy to come to the table and join us two to act as a resource and a support.
A resource?
Big, no cheer.
Canadian inter-
No.
She sounds more glamorous.
She sounds more glamorous.
Hello. Okay, I'm turning it over to Cole and Anne-Marie. Thank you.
Take it away.
Oh, okay, let's see. Policy ADDA-1 about the fingerprints really does comply, as it's written, with the statute because it says that it has to be, that's going to be a bunch of the employees, and it's discretionary for the volunteers and chaperones, except that in that first sentence there, there was a little bit of a typo glitch. So the words "shall be obtained" fell out of it, so it wasn't really a sentence, it was just a bunch of words. But if you put those in there, that's right. What, where the beef was, I think, was in the implementation of it. What's going to be discretionary and what's not going to be discretionary. I just handed you, yep. Looked at the current wording of the websites for each school. And the Center and Florence Sawyer have got exactly the same. Loomsburg, Burbank, and Hale have got the same. Mary Rollinson's is a little bit longer. And they, they do talk about the requirement in some cases and sometimes discretionary private to add the fingerprints. So, what I did, I took the direction of the policies up, was come up with some wording that would be consistent so that all of the websites would have the exact same words on them. I mean, it would be very clear, clearly articulate these things. You're required to have the fingerprints. These are the things that don't require the fingerprints, including classroom volunteers, because that's the big one. And then also-
Just one thing, but this is not going to be attached to the policy. This is protocol that she's talking about now. The policy, the only thing that's changing the policy is adding those three words.
Okay, right, so this will all be right there on the website. And then a third section that will say, if there's something that doesn't fit into one of these two categories, that at the discretion of the superintendent or her designated, these are the factors that she'll consider in deciding whether, if there's something new that comes up that doesn't fall into one of the categories. So if we, if, you know, if this gets the okay, then that would be the same on the website of all the schools. And then the principals would know, the parents would know. And then it would be clear to everyone that just to go into a classroom, you know, that you don't need to spend the $35 and take the time.
That's good, because we've gotten a lot of concerns about that. And we shouldn't have to ask them to do that. We want them to come to the schools. Okay, thank you for that.
I think that that'll be a nice way to clear it all up. And I think the consistency across the district is just so important right now. But missing those three words probably didn't help.
So, just for my own clarification, the district is going to have a protocol for the entire, for all of the buildings, and it's not going to be left up to the individual buildings as new?
No, we want it, we want it clean right across the district so that everybody's on the same page.
Okay.
And we have it set up for the next admin meeting.
So, do you want us to need to adopt-
If you guys are ready to adopt it, then-
I'm good. If the, your policy's gone through this, you've worked with the administration, it's scrubbed down, you have a game plan, I'm good with it.
Do you have a proposal to work on?
I don't know that it needs to go through Dorothy.
Shouldn't your protocol?
This protocol's owned by the administration.
Yeah, we're fine with it, we really are. And those words, the three words, missing word should have been in there to begin with, so.
So, I'll let you.
I move that we accept policy ADDA-1.
Second, Jennifer, anybody have any questions? All those in favor? It's unanimous, thanks, Nicole, thank you very much.
And then if I could just ask, because this has been the vein of policy's existence for about three years, if we could just get an update after the admin meeting that the principals understand?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You said you wrote something for the website?
I did.
So is that going to get changed after you talk to them?
Well, it's certainly not my place to say, here it is, and let's do it. But once it, once it gets the approval, people change places.
Okay.
Then, yes.
So, but they changed their own website, right? That's, that's the-
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
We can pull up on that if that's-
As I say, we actually have the ability to do it ourselves, too.
So, the next item is the, the school, the 2017-18 school year calendar. And hopefully, we're at a point now where everything's going to be answered and we can formally adopt the calendar. But I know the one outstanding item was the late starts at the high school and the number of late starts. So, I'll start and then Anne-Marie's going to kind of follow up.
So we did a follow-up meeting after our last school committee meeting. Anne-Marie, Dr. Graham and I sat down, had a follow-up meeting. We agreed to do the nine with the pensions such as perhaps a snow day might happen and it might end up only being eight. And so we've got nine in here. So thereafter, we had the philosophical discussion. Anne-Marie sat down with Perry and mapped out the late starts. And that's what you have presented before you. So Anne-Marie, do you want to do a little bit of follow-up on that?
So we eliminated six late starts on the calendar and then added three. So they moved around just a little bit. I think if you're meteorologically inclined, you might want to fire up your snow blower on those late start days because it seems like we're on late start days. So that we went, ended up, it was a net loss of three. So we went from 12 late, from 12 late starts at the high school to nine late starts at the high school. We added, I managed to-
Yeah, sure, sure.
PD done at the bottom, it's just stayed on your packet. So that PD, everybody's aware, PD done, professional development, parent, teacher, college, so the net's clear. And we've also, it's not on the paper, but we've also made an agreement that at the beginning of each year, I'll let the principals know what are the major religious holidays that will be happening during that year. So that they test, field trips, special events at the school, that they can keep those in mind when they're doing their scheduling.
So, so the late starts. I know, I know, I know, I know, and thank you for, I mean, I wasn't looking for you to reduce the number of late starts.
I was.
Okay, well, that's, that's good. I'm really looking for, again, what's the plan with the late starts? How is it driving student achievement?
I thought we had that discussion last time, though. I thought that we knew that with the new principal coming in and such, you know, I think that Dr. Graham can lay some things out and I think this doctor can look at it. But I think we also need to see how this goes with the new principal in place, too, so.
So, I'll let Kathy and then I'll-
Yeah, I'm just, and I'm sorry to be a broken record about things of this nature. But I agree with Lorraine about having, what the vision is. What, how is it going to impact improving student learning? But the other thing I thought about afterwards is that, and I don't know that we've seen the high school's school improvement plan or any of the school improvement. And I understand why, and that's not criticism, but I would like to see if, what the goals are, if they're related to improving student learning. And I guess it would make sense for any work that comes out of these days to be linked to that. So you can see the alignment.
And I think it would be nice if there, I mean, there has to be a plan for it. I'm just, I'm hesitant on this, but I, because I feel like it's kind of come up organically and just kind of gone along without being examined for effectiveness. But let's assume that there is a plan in place, there is a vision for these next year, there is a structure around it. Can we have those particular teachers and groups that are working on something come and share with us what it is that they're doing?
I'm sure that they would love to do that.
So we could understand how that's impacting.
That's probably a better way of approaching it, in terms of this. I would say, too, just for the purpose of updating the school committee, we're actually working on a district improvement plan. I want you to know-
Yay!
I think we talked about that at the beginning.
We've been reviewing it and playing with different ideas and such, and we looked at different formats. And so I want you to know that that's something that we're actually physically doing right now.
Yeah.
So, this kind of thing kind of comes in behind that. Do you know what I mean, to support it?
Yeah, but I guess, I'm sorry. And I just want to be clear that it's great to have people come and make presentations to us, and it's valuable when the kids come, you know, that's important work. But it would be good to know what the plan is and what their goals are so that when they come and present to us, so maybe they start with what their ideas are. It just concerns me that there wasn't the, the data, for lack of a better word. The, not, you know, there's a lot of anecdotal data, but not presented or collected in a way that makes sense when you're looking at outcomes and work. I just, you know-
So that would be, but you're-
I mean, I just want to make sure that what I'm saying makes sense. I think that this is time, you know, and, and how do you-
It's time out of the classroom and how are we justifying the time out of the classroom? Right.
So that's-
And I think that with a new principal coming in, that's got to be one of the, that's got to be part and parcel of your, his or her responsibilities is, we've got these late starts, the school committee's going to go nuts. Because I'm not going to vote for it again, I can't, I just can't, unless we know what the point is.
You don't have to vote for it now if you don't want to.
We actually do need to vote the calendar, but-
If, that's what I thought, if we're, if it's a philosophical discussion, then I feel uncomfortable having that without Dr. Graham in the room with that.
But we've heard from Dr. Graham for three years now on it, and I respect what he's provided to us. I think what we're looking for is something that ties directly to student learning. So let's leave it at that and just know that while late starts in and of themselves are good, everybody likes them, I think there has to be a structure around it, Kathy's point. And I think several of us have said that around the table for a while. And in order for us to get to the next year with late starts, it's got to be more than, you know, you know, my kids love sleeping in, too, and I'm sure the teachers really enjoy it. But what's the outcome? What's, yeah.
Right, and, you know, I think that it's, we're two years in. You know, Perry won't be with us next year, but we'll have a new principal who is. I think the fact that these are valued by teachers, it's time for them to work collaboratively and across discipline that they don't necessarily have. I'm not willing, at this point, to take it away. I'd just like to understand more about what the plan is and how they think it'll impact improving student learning.
Okay.
And I think as a principal, I think this would be something that would be attractive in terms of working in a district like this, to say, wow. Especially at the high school level, it seems to be easier to do-
There's great opportunity there to do some creative stuff.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm not ready to yank it, but I want to see more.
I would like to see something like along the lines of, by the end of the year, we will have achieved this. Something, I mean, just some goal, starting at the beginning, so there's something measurable when they get to the end.
Right.
I recognize it can be very useful, but I'd like it to be something that is, this is where we want to be. This is how the process goes to get there.
Did they not, my understanding was that there were goals set by these groups? And I'm thinking now that you're not comfortable with those goals?
We didn't see, I didn't, did we see?
I don't know that there were-
If there were goals, I don't recall seeing them. I saw the report that Dr. Graham presented a couple of meetings ago. So, yeah, I don't-
I don't think that report referenced particular goals and their achievement of, so.
There was a lot of, well, we had, in general, what the groups were doing.
Right.
But, you know, I use the term, you begin with the end in mind, to your point. What do you hope to achieve? And even if you don't achieve your goals, what do you learn from the process or what are you going to do? So that's-
And they might learn that the goal was not what they really ended up wanting.
Yeah.
Which is fine, too.
So there just needs to be some thought around it, I think that's the point.
So what I put down was an overall mapping of goals and intended outcomes.
Exactly, perfect. Thank you.
Let me do, I will move the calendar?
In a second.
Second.
Just a question, did it turn out, because of reducing several of these early-
Late starts?
Late starts, rather, that it turned out to be enough for one different day at the end of the year because there's more hours in school, or did it not add up to a whole day?
No, the late starts counted as a day.
Yeah, it's fine, yeah. That's a great question, though.
Any other questions? All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you very much.
And before you move-
Pardon?
You mentioned the district improvement plan. I didn't think, that was not a goal for this year.
No, no.
So-
We're just, we're working on it, I'm just saying.
I was going to say, do you just wait for the goals for next year, that one of the goals? I'm just wondering if this should be set timetable and that at all?
On what?
The district improvement plan. The district improvement plan.
Well, we're going to go through goal setting this summer in tandem with superintendent, and we'll come together like we do every summer.
If you think about it, though, this was one of the things that we had talked about early on, was the notion that we wanted to have a revisit of our school improvement plans and our district improvement plan. The only reason I brought it up tonight was to say, actually, because we've been having meetings on it of late, to say, actually, we're getting somewhere with this right now.
I just didn't know if it was on time for anyone.
No, it will be. All right, and so our next agenda item is the Audit Advisory Committee. And the Chair of the Audit Advisory Committee is in the House. Heather Hughes. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having me.
Mark, you're the school committee member on the Audit Advisory. Do you want to do a quick setup? Tell us where we are and turn it over to Heather.
We've been working on reviewing the applicants for the request proposals for our auditor and have a recommendation. And also, we recently keep a look at the actual audit report itself. And I think we'll be meeting with the auditor tomorrow, Thursday. And so I'm expecting the Chair will have a sense of the committee about where we recommend on the auditor.
So with that, Heather Hughes, and just let us know what you would like from us.
Well, let me ask you first, because I know you guys are trying to get out of here and-
No, we're here, we've got executive session.
Okay, I can wind through the path of how we got to where we got, or I could start with the punchline. So, do you guys have preference? I know you will-
I love the story.
I want to hear the story, too.
So when we were last, we talked about the bid list that we were putting together. We called out to a whole bunch of school districts that looked and felt similar to ours to say, hey, who knew Houston out there? And sadly, we learned it was really just two horses in the race, one of which was Powers and Sullivan, and the other was Millens and Heath. So, we expanded that and said, okay, so what if we went to school districts that didn't necessarily, weren't they regional school districts? Maybe they were smaller or bigger in cities. And we got a couple of additional names, but really not much. It just seems like there's maybe two meetings in town where we're concerned. So we went out to bid with three firms, and we also posted it on the COMBI system, COMBI?
Yeah.
System, yeah. So what ends up coming, in terms of responses, was Powers and Sullivan, Millens and Heath, and then we had this little, little firm in Maine.
In Maine?
Maine, based on what we reviewed, I would essentially call them unresponsive because they're not qualified. God bless, I'm glad that they, you know, gave it a go. In fact, as we were calling the references on Millens and Heath and Powers and Sullivan, one of my references was going through her recent process and said that this group had also applied, you know, put an RFP in. So I didn't, you know, got a given points for giving it a try, right. They've got three employees, two of whom have the same name as the guy running the firm. Two of those employees didn't have any experience anywhere else, so we just said, all right. But that brings us to really what the criteria was that we were looking at and making the determination, you know, do they get to that next level or not? The first was focused primarily on the technical components of it. So, if the responsiveness to the RFP, the direct relevant experience, and this goes across, you know, not just regional school districts, but just, you know, schools that are kind of in our demographics. The size of the firm, the structure, the resources available. We felt it was important to have a, you know, what I would call a bigger bench, so it's not just two or three employees in space. We looked at- employees in this space. We looked at qualifications of the supervisors, the general direction that was provided to the staff while they were going through an audit, how comprehensive the audit plan was, and, you know, basically realistic timeframes, you know, all of these things were taken into consideration, then ultimately the references. And then, of course, part two was, you know, costs, let's just get down to the dollars. So as I mentioned, we really were left with two firms, one of whom we're working with now, and the other who came in and did the plans and bought it. So, you know, when we looked at all of that, they all met the minimum qualifications to continue on, but, you know, in trying to figure out, you know, really where these two differed from one another, you know, from a Melanson Heath perspective, there was the benefit of having fresh eyes, you know, these guys have, you know, with fresh eyes comes, I guess, a credibility, because they haven't actually been through this process before. Their bench was deeper than what we saw over in Powers and Sullivan. Not to say that Powers and Sullivan's bench wasn't adequate, it was just we had deeper, they had 75 associates versus the 26, out of the 75, you know, over 50 of them have development experience. The, on the, the Powers and Sullivan side, you know, they're known quantity, and with known quantity just comes ease of doing business. So when they come in, they know the systems, and you don't have to retrain them. There's, you know, some benefit to that. They have also agreed to not increase the price from what we're having today, and they're going to hold that for the next three years. And that against Melanson Heath, there's a differential of about $10,000 over the course of three years.
Oh.
It's not huge, you know, and I say that lightly, because it is huge in, you know, some aspects of it, when you guys are trying to, you know, get through your budget with, you know, the challenges that you're having. But in the larger scheme of things, when you're weighing certain things against each other, I feel like the price, especially when you look at the ad hoc pricing that they do. So the ad hoc pricing for Melanson is actually much cheaper than it is for-
So give us some examples of what would be included in the ad hoc, because it may be, they may add up.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't think you typically have done ad hoc work before, but as I look at, you know, one, there's a lot of caveats in these contracts that these auditors have. They, there are so many caveats that, you know, even if there's a material finding that they don't catch, they're covered. They're not, you know, based on the sample sizes and all that stuff. So, you know, to some degree, I look at this and think, you know, I don't have much on their regular audit you guys would catch. You know, based on what you guys have learned from the recent forensic audit you had, you might be interested in having some ad hoc work, like, say, you know, help with creating certain types of reporting that your financial team, you know, can look at to help the process, you know, help your understanding, you know, get a better sense of, you know, there's the external audit, but technically speaking, we should also be doing internal auditing, and to have a check and balance outside of the actual day-to-day group that you have might not be a bad idea. So again, you haven't used it in the past, and as we were spitballing on, you know, geez, what could you do? You know, there are some options, whether you feel like doing them or not, you should understand that, you know, if you were to go heavier on the ad hoc work, the pricing would probably even out a bit, in my mind, but.
That's interesting. I'm going to interrupt you for one second, because there are several reports that we're going to be asking for, and if it's a burden, then that's something we should consider, because there are some reports that we said we wanted to be consistent, to provide, you know, visibility into what's actually happening, so that we also can start to watch trends, to see where there's opportunity. So that's, that's really helpful. Okay, sorry for the interruption.
No, that's not. That's essentially the differences between the two. So, there's all three of us, say, so unanimous vote, but there's three of us on the committee. But we were unanimous in our recommendation to committee here today from Melanson Heath. As we were looking at it, we felt that there's their deeper bench and the, you know, benefit of fresh eyes. And I say that, you know, just from the perspective that you have a better shot of potentially done finding something because they've got no experience in this space. So we weighed those two things, you know, against, we felt that that offset the $10,000 differential. And again, that's over three years, it's not each year. So that would be our recommendation. Let me pause and see if you guys have any questions.
Lynn. How many ad hoc items would we have to do before it's pre-regated out?
Well, so that is a great question, and it's really predicated on how significant your asks are. So I would have to, you had examples in the past, sorry?
It's an hourly rate?
Yeah, and the hourly rate is, you know, again, it's predicated on how many hours they have to put into it. So, once they create a report, like I'm thinking of, you know, the financial committee, if there's something like on a quarterly basis that you guys are looking for, and again, it's not that the internal group can't do it, it's just that it's a little bit of a burden right now based on the staffing. This might be something that they can, you know, either create and maybe set it and forget it, or it's just something that, you know, maybe the startup costs are-
Maybe they can create it and we can duplicate it, so that they give you the structure.
Yeah.
Or maybe they could even do it within our system, come in and do it in our system.
Right. So the way I was thinking about it, because it's a great question, is you guys have never used it in the past. So hypothetically speaking, if you were to employ it now, it probably wouldn't be on an outrageous basis. So I don't know that it would make up some of that $10,000, but probably not all of it. I just know that when you look at ad hoc work on the other side, it would be more costly. And that, and it's okay, but I think you'd probably have to do a significant amount of ad hoc requests, or sizable asks for you to make up the difference, if you were planning to. And I'm not trying to, you know, dissuade you from looking at that, but I think, you know, it's, it's just a data point, so.
So I'm going to ask for questions around the table. Before I do that, though, I'd like to get perspective on what was figured into this coming year's budget for, and where are we? You know, based on whatever the number is right now, Heather, for FY '18, '19, '20, if you've just got FY '18, that would be helpful, and then Pat, if you could share with us what we spent before, and then what you've figured into the budget, because the last thing we want to do is, is start to bundle more in.
Yes.
Well, I think that I've covered it in the budget, as far as, as far as the cost, if we were to go with Melanson Heath.
Oh, so you already know the-
No, we knew that we were going to want to bid.
Oh, I didn't know that. You have been involved. Okay, okay, good. I'm feeling good about that.
Good meeting with the advisory.
Oh, I didn't know that. All right.
I've been asking her all sorts of internal questions, you know.
Thank you.
To calibrate. So, the first year, the price differential would be $2,800. So, Powers and Sullivan is looking at $28,900 year-over-year, over three years, and then Melanson Heath starts at $31.7, and then does basically a 2%, increase each year, so a COLA adjustment, I guess. And, you know.
Can we negotiate that?
Well, actually, it was what I was going to ask. You know, we might be able to go back to Melanson and see if there's something that we can negotiate, and maybe part of that negotiation is committing to doing some level of ad hoc reporting on the side, you know, commit to take the money that we would spend here, and maybe push it into something else that would benefit the school.
Yep.
Yep.
That's a good idea.
Have we, have we recognized areas, specific areas, that we want, that we might want to use that?
Well, actually, we're waiting for the list from Finance Subcommittee to come forward to us for their recommendation of regular reporting, and I know that you guys have been working on that. So, when that comes forward, that would, that, then it comes to the school committee, because we've got to make the decision on, you know, you guys make, the finance committee makes the recommendation for which reports they think are the most critical, and then we would have to vote on that if it's an additional fee, right? And I think that if you need an answer right away, we're not going to be able to do that. Because when do-
We don't need it straight away. I mean, I think, you know, based on the plans, you know, we could, I mean, we were not thinking, to be honest, this is a boon, us being here now, we were thinking we were going to have to wait another two weeks, and we were comfortable with that. So if there's time that you need to look at things, that's fine. If there's anything that we can do to help you in that process, let us know.
So maybe we, would you, do you think you guys would be ready to bring forward your recommended reports?
We were hoping to be able to meet with Powers and Sullivan to go over last year's audit before we, right, what we're thinking of for-
Yeah, but I don't think you need Powers and Sullivan for this particular-
Well, mostly if we want, if you want us to recommend reports, or ad, or possible ad hoc work, we still need, I think by reviewing last year's audit will help. We have some questions for them on perhaps why certain things weren't caught in the audit, so therefore what maybe would be an ad hoc process that would catch those things. You know, as we found in the forensic audit, there are things that the regular audit doesn't find, so.
Right. Right, and you can't expect a typical annual audit.
Right.
Because it's cursory.
So maybe those things, one of the things, I'm fairly confident the Finance Subcommittee will request is the, a report out on the revolving funds.
Yes.
The cause centers, the, you know, extended day, pre-K, preschool, all of those.
Services.
Good services, athletics.
Athletics.
Yes. So all those.
That's definitely one we've talked about consistently, that we all want to see, so.
Yes.
So we, not to steal the Finance Subcommittee member.
Oh, you can steal.
Yeah, so tomorrow, because we were talking about the same thing last week, as we were looking at the reports and saying, okay, let's get, you know, the firm in here. One of the questions we were going to ask was, hey, here's what came out of the forensic report. Tell me why it didn't get caught here. And, you know, I can tell you by looking at the contract, why. There's so many caveats on all of that, but my ask is, would, is it possible to have somebody from the committee come tomorrow night, so that maybe you can pre-vet?
He's on the Finance Subcommittee. He's like double duty.
Could you, I guess, give you-
I'll be there.
Well, that was my, part of my hopes.
But Better said that others are welcome, I guess.
But then we have forum for Finance Subcommittee.
It's true, you have to be in the audience, I guess.
I'd have to be in the audience, I wouldn't be allowed to ask any questions.
So can we follow the questions you might be, you know, holding for?
Yeah.
And to represent?
They were discussed in the Finance Committee meeting this morning, and they're substantially similar, or the same questions that the Advisory Committee as well has. Much in alignment.
Yeah, I think we're pretty much on the same. So even if you guys need a report, we meet next Wednesday, Wednesday after, Wednesday after that. But we, so we have two meetings before the next school committee meeting, so.
The Finance Subcommittee.
Yeah, they meet, we meet at 8:30 on Wednesday mornings.
So you feel like, to make this decision, you would want to know the extent of the reporting?
Well, I don't, I mean, I want to be careful here, because, I mean, we have, some of us, we, I'll throw my name in there, have a tendency to go down some pretty dark alleyways and sit there for a while, and I don't think we want to, I think we want to ask the salient questions, I think we want to understand the scope of the work that we would like to have done. We are not going to be able to actually create the yarn, so.
Let me ask this question, and I'm not trying to force an answer, but if hypothetically you came out of that meeting and said, you know, there's no reports that we would want to ask.
Oh, but we know that's not true.
But hypothetically.
Yep.
Would that then sway your decision to go with Powers and Sullivan?
Well, there's also an internal conversation. Perhaps our staff is capable enough, and the creating of the reports is an iterative process, and over the course of several months or quarters, we will figure out exactly what we want out of the reports, and it may-
But why waste the time?
It may or may not be the case that we want to bring in an outside organization.
Right, so whatever the reason might be, I guess what I'm just trying to understand is this decision point that you guys have, is it simply about, would we employ them for ad hoc work or not? And if the answer is no, then we go to the cheaper alternative, or are you thinking something different?
I, I, I mean-
I'm not ready to make a recommendation like this.
When do you need a decision?
Well, I keep looking over here, because this is the person that it impacts, and if hypothetically you're going with Melanson, there's going to be some ramp for that staff coming in, so she's going to want as much runway as possible. So I would think that we would really, at the latest, want to get started on this audit in May, which I think they were suggesting anyways, right? So they're probably preparing for that, but we would probably need at least a week or two, probably two, in advance of that, like mid-April, to make this decision.
So we have a meeting on April 12th. What would the committee need?
Well, I think the Finance Subcommittee, I feel, would be ready to make a recommendation at that point.
Okay. All right, so then we can count on that, and then the leader, we would, we would want to put that on the agenda.
We have two meetings in January to get it out before that, so.
Yeah, that's great.
And I do have sort of general comments. When we, this is a professional organization with similarities to a lawyer, and generally, when you engage a lawyer, for a matter of account, it could be that the values that you see in the organization overrule the price to some limited extent, and it could be that a few thousand dollars a year is not significant in this decision.
Well, you can make it up in time, right.
Judgment this body to make. I'll just put that, I'm a C for that point of view.
And I can understand that, and I, especially given the fact that, while they're different units, the forensic audit unit is different than the annual audit unit at Melanson Heath, but there was so much done that they do talk to each other, so I can certainly understand. What are your thoughts? You sit on the Audit Advisory.
I, I'm, as Heather described, I find the depth of Melanson Heath's staff appealing and useful, and it means that they have internal resources when they run into troubles or need advice internally. So I find that very appealing, and I admit that I found our experience, their different division or department forensic audit, to be of useful experience. And then third, despite that there is a sort of ramp of time for a new organization, I think it is healthy for any organization, a new auditor now, again.
Right.
So those are the three major things that, you know, be in that direction. It's not, I'm not adamant, it's, there's nothing wrong with Powers and Sullivan, they're a capable firm, and they do very good work, and so it's not, it's not a strong advocacy, but it's a leaning party.
Okay. All right, so why don't we do that, then? We'll have the Finance Subcommittee doing their thing, and then, are you, are you going to be able to come back?
Yeah, sure.
On the 12th?
Absolutely.
And we'll try to get you on early.
Okay.
And then, just on behalf of the full committee, to you and the other folks on the Audit Advisory, but specifically to you for stepping in and taking this on, it's critical. I mean, we saw the immense amount of work that went on with the audit, the forensic audit. I think that experience helped all of us learn a whole lot more. It was like drinking from the fire hose, and there wasn't, I mean, there was immense amount of work that went in for the administration too. So Heather, what you've done in leading the group is really invaluable, so thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, we'll put you on for the 12th.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we've got one Subcommittee report, Finance, and who's going to do that? In the absence of-
I'm reminding the accent of the arch here. Mark can help. So we met today, and we did approve some minutes, that I know some of them have gotten up, some of them will be up shortly.
Well, we'll, okay, so let's do this, and just get it done. The minutes need to be up by the end of this week, because they were supposed to be up by today.
Well, they can't be up by the end of this week, because we have to vote them, and the earliest we can vote them is next Wednesday.
Is when?
Next Wednesday.
So they all have to be done by next Wednesday? That's good, that works.
Okay.
So, can you-
They could be put up in draft form.
They could be put up in-
Yes.
Plaid form.
They need to be on-
Unofficial. They could be, that could be done as well.
All of them, right? Commitment?
Work will be done.
Thank you. Okay, going on.
And basically, we started talking about our, our goals, where we are getting, how we're getting to our goals. We discussed with the administration the budget calendar, the budget book, both of which have, significant work's been done on. They're going to provide us with a draft of the budget book.
Oh, when is that?
Next week.
Next week.
Oh, terrific.
So, we'll be able to review that meeting next Wednesday. It's not finished, because we haven't seen, I mean, there's some things we might want in it that aren't, that are, we're just, it's the first draft. In the budget calendar, we discussed things like what we can do front-end, starting September, what we can get out of the way, so that you're, we're not discussing them in January, when we're trying to discuss the actual numbers.
Yeah.
And making a policy. And then policy also reaches back, because we do need to come up with a list of policies, financial policies. We discussed the improvement plan, right? So there's still phase two we need to, we need to-
This is the action of the corrective action plan.
The corrective action plan.
Yeah, we're going to do that the next meeting.
So there's phase two, and then there's the phase three, which is predominantly split. And a lot of the policies will, are going to come out of that.
Good, great.
So, we'll have, we should have something for policy shortly.
Right.
It was a very productive meeting. It was a very productive meeting again this morning. I think our meetings, all of the.
It was two hours.
All the subcommittee meetings are incredibly valuable meetings.
But these are the goals for next year.
No, this is this year's.
Yeah. We were reviewing where we are in our goals, and like all the goals, the forensic audit, things budget-wise.
Chewed up everybody's time.
Chewed up a lot of time. But I think we can at least get there with the preliminary budget calendar. The budget calendar is going to be preliminary because it's the first time. Some things might not work where we think they should.
Yeah.
And so it's gonna be, it's gonna be a work in progress.
But it gives us a place to start from, which we've never had before. So that's great. Thank you for that. I think that's important too, so that we can plan, and like folks who come to the meetings who have comments to make, they can plan, and we know when things are happening. But, okay, great.
And when to pay attention, and if you have a particular interest, you pay attention in September.
That's great. I'm glad to hear it. Thanks. All right. I don't see any other reports, but if there are, Kathy, Nicole.
Nope.
All right, so we're moving on. Correspondence. So I know that there was a group of folks that met with all three Stowe reps last week. My understanding was that that was open to folks in all three towns, but it sounds like you only got folks from Stowe. And specifically around the increases on pre-K, I've heard from a couple of people. Now, I will also say, I've heard from folks who have said the complete opposite about the increases. But that's the nature of the work, right? You've got different constituents with different concerns. So I think it's just, you know, it's only fair to represent that as well. But for those who were at that meeting, if there are any high level, I don't wanna get into a 30-minute conversation about it, but salient points that you think you'd like to share with the rest of us, feel free to do that.
Well, there was about four points that came up in the session. I don't know if we know what, in the past, if you could go back. The superintendent did not do well with communication on their reports. So just, it came up, communication, so they just want better communication. And they talked about we need to do it, they didn't have the solution, but we told them, they were unaware, a lot of them were unaware that on the website of the school committee, the agenda is there, the minutes are there, the meeting packets are there, so if they wanna follow along, it's there. And they didn't, they didn't seem to be aware of that. Some of them might have been, but people were asking. So there was that one. They were worried about kindergarten, and they had one recommendation, and that was, and you guys already solved it, could you talk about it before the budget, before they get the application, so they know what's going on? And then they wanted to know about high school. They were just wondering how high school's gonna hit. And those were the big points.
What about the high school? And I'm sorry, Phil's ahead.
What are we gonna do with the building?
Does a lot of talk about it? They don't, we don't know who knows what's going on with it? When is that gonna hit?
Well, they don't know what's going on with it. We've had lots of conversation, but that's why we're building the, the small group of us who's going to put together the structure, the talking points, so that we can go out to all three towns, have the conversation. And that will happen. I'm hoping to target, I'm hoping to target early fall to start having those conversations. But there's work that has to be done, you know, in June and a little bit into the summer in order to build all the materials and structure everything. And I promise you that we're not gonna be spending a third summer weekly meetings this year. We'll do a more traditional structure for that. But anyway, that was a great update. Nicole, Mark, anything to add?
No, I just, I thought it was, I thought it was a very productive, just, not that anything came out of it as far as, you know, a list of to-dos, but meeting the, meeting the community, hearing, hearing them out. And I think it was my impression that everyone left there at least understanding better than when they came.
But it's a shame it was just Stowe, because I know, someone had told me that it was announced somewhere that it was all three towns.
I have no idea.
Well, thank you all for doing that. Mark?
I think there are some legitimate grievance that our previous superintendent has promised various things that were not in his ability to fulfill on, partially because they are the responsibility of the school committee.
Well, and that's hard.
I think we were able to talk through that and, and at least settle the expectations in that room. And then it's now up to the people at this table, including the superintendent, to continue to communicate what in fact is, is happening next and what we don't, what we're not certain of next, so.
I think the challenge too is that if, if you're not really aware of what goes on in a school committee and what the school committee does, and how do you follow along, and where do you find the information? And, and we've consistently said it's all out there, but, and I talked to the superintendent about this a little bit as far as, and even the Stowe reps, is there a way for us to get the agenda to the town clerks or whoever is in the town and put it on their listserv so they can push it out, so that any resident? Because it's not just parents that we need to make sure see these agendas. It's the entire community. They make the decisions, right? I think, and then I don't know if it makes sense specifically for parents to, to ask the principals, would they consider in their electronic newsletters just putting a link to the school committee website? We, I, I don't wanna get into, you know, taking over a principal's, that's not the point, but even if it's just a little link.
I noticed on the Lancaster town website, there is a link to the school committee.
Right.
Where you can get everything that you need. I, your luck personally would be locked in to ask the principals to, to do that.
Just to put a link on their newsletter?
Yeah, personally, yes, that is my bias.
I guess it's up to the superintendent.
Yeah, it is, but it's just, it's.
It actually makes more sense because the link is already there at high school. I mean, when you pull into anything, websites, school committee's right there. There's a own tab, everything's right there. But to have the clerk do it maybe, or even have it in the newspaper?
But it's automatically linked, if like in Lancaster, with all the town departments, it has the school department. You click on it, boom, you're at the webpage. And I don't know if Stowe and Bolton have that as well.
I guess the only reason I suggested is because I don't know if new parents coming in the district even know where to start. But again, I'll let the superintendent.
I'd be willing to talk to the town clerk just so she would post it on meetings happening, you know, it's the current meetings.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
There's no reason why the school committee shouldn't be listed. It is a town.
Yep.
Right.
They are sending the agenda.
Say again?
They are sending the agenda.
So maybe we could just ask them if they could help make it more visible.
It's not a requirement because the school posts it, but it is, I mean, it can go on the front page just as a, as a relevant meeting.
Okay, great. All right, anything else for correspondence? Thank you again. Thank you. Okay, items to be considered for next, of course, Alita, I did not bring my.
Draft?
So I know we're gonna have the audit advisory back and, right?
Actually, it's quite a full agenda, the April 12th.
I know, we gotta be really efficient.
Is April 12th the next one?
Yeah, which is why this one was.
Pardon?
The workshop.
The workshop is also.
We have the Dorothy workshop, which is huge.
Your next three meetings actually are quite full. I'm just letting you, just reminding you, my next three meetings.
Bus contract is on there.
The bus contract. Oh, can we make sure all that stuff gets in the packet early? So we have time to review it, because I gotta tell you, I'm not gonna be able to review it in a day or two.
There is an update on that.
I think Ted has an update on the bus.
The bus contract is, we're gonna revisit the contract.
I thought you were anywhere. Oh!
This is Fran.
We're gonna revisit it.
This is what we should have today.
Okay.
So I think that.
Based on the conversation that we had this morning in finance committee.
It led us down some different pathways. Okay.
It should be available by the 18th. We should have all the bids in, and have an idea.
So I'll move it to the 26th?
If, if that works, oh, if that works, yeah.
Move it to the 26th.
All right, and then if there are any.
We discussed that tape.
That was also in our office.
If there are any other burning issues that we absolutely have to get on the agenda, let me know, but I think we're chock full. Nicole?
Can I just say something to Mr. Mahoney to his point?
In the middle of the school committee meeting.
He was asking us to talk about agenda items for the future, for the future. And just talking about our particular meeting, I would, I don't wanna speak for the Lancaster or Bolton reps, but our meeting happened very organically and, and was a very, I thought, positive meeting. So you might want to talk to your fellow neighbors and maybe put something like that together. I don't think revisiting a vote at this point is going to happen without something like that.
So I'm not even sure why that came up, but.
We can talk about it later.
But to that point, I did receive an email today. I had a chance to go through it in details. But there is a resident that asked if we would be interested in meeting, and Neil and I will coordinate, although I'm traveling next week, so it will be for a couple of weeks. So anyway, all right, I think that is good. I think, given that, we are all set and.
Can you just have the agenda all set?
Oh, consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, Alita, thank you. Did you folks look at, there's two sets of draft meetings for the March 15th meeting. And just make sure you've reviewed, I'm hoping you've reviewed, the one with the edits. If you have any questions, concerns, speak now or forever.
Is that the one we discussed?
I'm accusing myself of that.
The other ones?
Any questions?
Yeah.
Are we good?
We're good. They were mine.
All right, so consider those approved, and the warrant of March 31st, consider that approved. Thanks, Alita.
Make sure everybody signs the warrants.
And we will make sure we sign the warrants. And I think that concludes this portion of the meeting.
I will move, you're right.
Yep, we are.
We had an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Section 30A, Subsection 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for units A and C, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares our town representative from the three towns will join us, Mr. Lowe and the superintendent.
And Anne Marie.
And Anne Marie.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call. Nicole?
I.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lorraine, yes, Mark?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yeah.
And Jennifer. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Ms. Abby.